Okay, so we're gonna move into the regular meeting. We've already done the pledge, the roll call, all of that, so we'll go right into number four. Need a motion to accept the minutes from the August 27th regular board meeting and the September 9th budget meeting number one.
I'm making a motion to accept the minutes for August 27th regular board meeting and special budget meeting number one on September 9th. Second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, the supervisors' monthly financial report, you guys will notice if you look at that, you'll see that $1 million being moved from our money market account into H Fund. Just as a reminder, that is the ban money that we got for the wastewater treatment plant. We got $3 million. We left one in H Fund where we paid those bills for the wastewater treatment plant out of, and we put the other $2 million in our money market account so we could gain the interest. And so we've just moved another million. So there's still $1 million of the ban money sitting in our money market account. And so, as you can see, yeah, so that's the only thing I really need to point out on the monthly report. Okay. Persons addressing the board. We've got Darrell Gregory here. He's candidate for legislator. Come on up, Darrell.
I'm at the podium, or?
Wherever you want.
Where I want. I'll go to the podium. It seems like it's the center of the room.
Yep.
For those of you who don't know me, but I think I know everybody in the room, I'm Darrell Gregory. I'm running for Area 2 legislator. Francis Preier is currently your legislator. He's a Republican, I'm a Democrat, and what I've been telling people is pretty much the way that it is. You got a choice this time. Last time he ran unopposed, this time you got a choice. And the choice is, you can choose one farmer's son or the other. You figure out which one's best for you. Okay?
Right.
And if you don't mind, I'll pass out some of my palm cards.
Okay.
If you want to, I can go get it. If you don't mind me staying, I'll stay. I have a meeting to attend at 7:30, but...
You're welcome to stay.
Okay, thanks.
And as a reminder, anybody who wants to come, thank you. Any candidate that wants to come and address the town board and the people that are here are more than welcome. So, pass the word. Got one more meeting before Election Day, so...
That's it? Only one?
Only one. Alright. Is there any public comment on non-agenda items?
I was wondering if you could tell us when the other two 30 mile an hour signs are gonna be placed on Sunset?
We still, county still hasn't gotten any signs. I'm not sure what their holdup is, if they're not buying them because it's getting toward the end of the budget year or what's going on, but...
The man that was here, Mark, said that they were on order, that was two months ago when we saw him, you know, when we were walking. The other thing I wanna say is, the school bus that comes down our street now is a menace. If I had children in school, I'd be calling the school board and saying, "Fire that guy." He is going at least 50 miles an hour down that street. I don't know if there's kids in the bus, but it's the school bus, and the other, the town bus goes quickly. School bus goes faster.
That'd be a good idea to call the school, not the Noah, because...
If he doesn't stop, I'm going to ask Mr. Baron to call the sheriff's department. He said he'd be willing to do that, and contact the sheriff's department, the sheriff's down there.
Wilford King's the same way. I think they're so short drivers, they're behind in their schedule.
It doesn't matter.
Before they start, they're behind.
It doesn't matter.
I understand that, but that's the bus driver, I think is the bus driver's philosophy is, "I need to get stuff." And I'm not saying it's right.
Right. No, no, but I mean, it's a hazard. I mean, it's a hazard to anybody that's in their car or walking on that street. It's a hazard to any kid that's on that bus, and it's a hazard to the bus driver. If he loses control, and I mean, the bus is going like this, there's no reason for that.
Okay. I'll actually put a call into the bus garage tomorrow and let them know that, you know, we have bus drivers that are speeding through there.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep, I will. Okay, is there any other non-agenda? Jim?
I'll follow up on that. I thought at the last meeting, it was indicated that they had the signs at the garage, which is about installing them.
Okay, I'll have to check on that, 'cause they, we're the ones that get the... Yeah, we get the bill, and we haven't, you know, they bill us as soon as they have them, so that we come get them, and...
I had the impression from what Mark said that these were signs that have been around for a while.
Okay. Alright, I'll check on that.
But, you know, the speed is, now this is 35. So 50, 55 is a comfortable number for people going down that road.
Yes, and I, you know, I never take the illegal shortcut when I go to the wastewater treatment plant. I drive Sunset. And I don't, other than that first little straightaway when you get on, I don't see how anyone can, I mean, I know they speed through there, but I mean, it's so twisty-turny. It's, and then, you know, you gotta be aware too, 'cause the ware's got, is logging trucks blocking one of the lanes, and if you come on that going fast...
There was a white pickup truck, you know, last month, and he was going so fast, my husband and I were on the road, that I actually went, "What are you doing?" He slammed on his brakes and started to come back. And I was going to stand there and say, "I'm an old lady," you know? But he was a local, I think, and it wasn't on our street. And I've been looking for the truck, because it has a decal on the back of it. So it's, it's not fun there anymore.
One more thing, and we'll stop beating this horse. The placement of the two signs are at both ends. Like, as soon as you get off 374 on one end, and as soon as you get off the Standish Road on the other, that's where the 30 mile an hour. So you've got about a mile to drive, and there's no houses. They must forget that it's 30 miles an hour, and where all the houses are and all the people walking, that's where they go really, really fast.
Okay. Alright, I'll check on that for you. Alright.
Sure had that contract when they did that with their detour signs.
Yeah. They should've put up speed signs, too. Okay, resolutions. Motion to approve the September bills. Let me get to that. I'll read them into the record. General Fund, $13,886.57. Highway Fund, $10,868.06. Town Hall, Highway Garage Capital Fund, here's the big one, $1,162,138.11. Now you can see we're paying the, paying all the trades that are at, working at the wastewater treatment plant. Line Mountain Sewer District, $5,066.79. Line Mountain Water District, $1,379.52. Danamora Water District 2, $25. Ledger's Water District, $1,803.22. For a total of $1,207,119.19.
That's a big one. I don't know if I wanna approve that.
I'll make the motion to approve the September 2025 bills for $1,207,119.19.
Any more discussion? Roll call, Jim?
Yes.
Jason?
Yeah.
Mike?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Okay, the next one is a motion to change the start times for the November 24th and the December 22nd meetings to 6 o'clock due to it being DA court nights. For those two, because of Thanksgiving and Christmas, we had moved the meetings to the Mondays instead of the Wednesday, 'cause the Wednesday would've been the day before Thanksgiving and the day before Christmas. And the DA happens to have court, and they might run into 5 o'clock, but they won't run into 6, 'cause they'll kick them out by then. So I need a motion to change those two start times.
I'll make a motion to change the November 24th and December 22nd meetings from 5 to 6. Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, the third one here is to finalize our decision and put it on the record that we will not be renewing Alliance sales sand contract.
I'll make the motion to finalize sales contracts with Alliance and not renew the contract at this time.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? Roll call, Jim?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Mike?
No.
Deb?
Yes.
And we had talked to the, just to give a little more information on that, we had talked to the, actually, the owner and the, well, two of the owners of that company, who wanted us to renew again for another, another five years. And we just, we just said that, you know, "All the sand that you're cherry picking out there is the sand that our highway guys need." It's the same sand. It's the sand without gravel or anything in it. And, you know, they told us, "Well, you should've given us two years' notice that you were not gonna renew the contract." It's like, "Well, you know, it's a five-year contract, so there's no expectation that it's gonna be longer than five years." But I know where the guys get their sand from, and actually where they're pulling sand out, there's areas where they're hitting gravel and they're hitting, getting it down into the mud. So they're gonna be moving into some of the sand that we pull from pretty soon. So, I will take, make that tearful call tomorrow to them. And, you know, if we find that, you know, we had, what we had told them is that, you know, "We need at least a year so that we can actually thoroughly assess what we have in that pile." Because there was an, there was an estimated survey done when Vess was here, so back in that timeframe. And at that time, they said, "Oh, you know, you've got, you know, all these years' worth of sand left there." But that was just an estimate, you know, there was no core drilling, there was nothing to say that, yes, "The hill actually runs like this, or does it run like this, what's underneath there, you know, are there buildings there, are there, you know, anything down there, you know, how much of it is gravel and stuff that we'd have to sift if we start hitting that?" So...
I didn't wanna see another five-year contract, but if they would've did something different, like a year-to-year contract, would've been a little better, just sort of like kind of analyze it, but...
Well, and that's what we kinda said...
Again, taking a year off at least to try to see what we got, and...
And that's what we told them, you know, "We need to be able to take an honest, full look at what's there and assess whether or not we can afford to have them take all that sand anymore." So...
Can I ask how much a load of that is worth? I mean, how much are taking out, like a tonnage-wise, a yardage-wise, per ton?
Well, so far this year, well, as of last Wednesday, they had taken out 29,406 tons.
Okay, you don't know, like, how much each truck is worth, or at least?
Not 15, what is it, 15 cents a ton?
Yeah, it's 15.25 a ton.
It's whatever they're...
Each truck is, uh, let's see, I looked at a slip today. One truck had 35 tons on it. So each truck leaving has, you know, between 30 and 35 tons on it.
But it's $15 a ton?
15.25 a ton, yeah.
A ton, which is a lot more than what you're buying average sand, pit sand for, if you had to go buy it.
If we had to go buy it, if it's sifted, we'd probably have to pay about $20 a ton for it. And plus, plus trucking it, you know, from wherever that pit is. So if we have to go to Malone to get sand, or we gotta go to, you know, you know, the volume of sand that we need, if we have to go a distance to get it, you know, you gotta add those costs. We'd end up, you know, costing us $30 a ton for something we sold for $15 a ton, so...
So basically, you know, if you think about it, if you're selling that sand for $15 a ton, oh yeah, you're gonna pay, you pay more than that for bank run, basically, and maybe it's sifted, but this is supposed to have, like, be a higher grade, more desirable sand. We're giving it away.
Yep.
Basically, that's worth $50 a ton then. If you're telling me that that, if it's gonna cost you twice as much to go get sand to go down the road, you know what that is?
Yep.
So that was a bad contract.
Yep. But, and, you know, and the sand we use is very desirable. It does a good job, because it's dark, it, you know, attracts the sun, it melts. So, I mean, we'll give it a year if we can get core sampling done that shows that, yeah, "We've got a lot more sand than it looks." You know, we might be able to, but they, you know, and, and they didn't wanna raise their price at all. They, you know, they couldn't do that because of tariffs, because of the dollar's weakness, they didn't want any, they weren't willing to pay...
That's 7 acres that's in the tire plant. Is there sand there for sale that could be sold?
That's a different grade.
That's a different grade?
Yep.
So excited, yeah.
Yeah, they, 'cause they're, they haul from there as well. It's a, it doesn't have the grit in it. I don't know if, by running through the culverts, you know, the pipes that sent it over the road, if it basically broke it down more. It's a lot finer, because when the whole thing with the road being closed came up, I had recommended to them that, to haul all they could out of ours first, do five days a week out of ours, so that when the road closed, it wouldn't be an issue, and they said, "Well, we can't, because, you know, we have this yard that has this, this grade of sand, and this yard has this grade of sand, and we can't, we don't have enough room to do it all at once," and, you know, the explanation why. So that's why I learned that it was a different grade, and so, but...
Yes, the newer process stuff.
So Deb, did you hire a company to do the core drilling sampling?
We will have to. I mean, to do, to do that, we'd have to hire, I mean, surveyors should be able to do it if, I mean, a certain kind of surveyor. I, you know, they, they, someone must have equipment that, where they can, you know, see what's down there. But, I mean, if, but they, there's a lot of it gone. I mean, there's still a lot left, but, you know, the next generation and the generation after that should not have to buy sand. So, anyway. Old business. Line Mountain Wastewater Treatment Plant project update. As you saw by the bills, all the trades are working, it's moving along. Patrick keeps us up to date as far as, you know, they're working today, you know. He'll call and say, "Nobody's here today. Where are they?" So, I mean, there's certain days where one trade's waiting for the other to get a piece, parts in, and so... But it is moving along. There's still some pieces of equipment that are weeks out from arriving, so... The end date, I know the general contractor would love to see it done by the end of the year. It doesn't sound like all the parts are gonna be here by then, so... But they do have it buttoned up, you know, the building's in place. They're getting all the outside stuff done so that they can work during the winter. So it's just gonna be basically indoor stuff, except for the clarifiers out in the open pits, I think are supposed to be in before winter hits, but we'll see. Veterans Park update. We were able to mow it a couple weeks ago. Clinton County Soil and Water had recommend, recommended letting it grow as high as we felt comfortable with, because of course of grass, the higher it is above the ground, that's how deep your roots are going below the ground. And if we wanted that to be a really sustainable lawn that would be, would survive the winters and be good for the, for the spring, we wanted to let it get as high as possible so that it could get a really deep root system. And so, actually, one of them came out last week to take a look at it, and they said it was, that it had taken really well, and that it should be pretty good next spring, besides the area where somebody went and mowed it. But, that's another dead horse that we beat all the time. But we should be able to, you know, now we'll be able to have some foot traffic on it, you know, get the things on it that we want, and get that fully up to, up to speed in the spring. Sand sales up to date. I told you, they took 29,406 as of last week. Their minimum was a little under 29,000, so they have met their minimum. So anything they take above that, they still owe us money on. We are actually just about even with how they hauled last year. Getting mixed, mixed messages from the truck drivers. One of them says, "We're done on the 15th." The other one says, "No, we're going till the 30th." So, I guess they gotta figure that out at the, back at the home base on that. Excuse me?
You skipped C.
Skipped C. Standish, oh, Standish Road closure, bridge replacement update. Originally, they're saying October 15th, maybe. There's still a lot of private vehicles who are act, who are cutting through where they shouldn't be cutting through. And they actually, the scale operator told me today, there's actually a woman that drove through there, and she was screaming at the truck drivers that he needed to get out of her way, she needed to go through. It just, it just makes, I mean, I've had some comments from people that are not around here who are working in the area and whatnot, and they don't have a very good impression of the people that live in Line Mountain, unfortunately, because of a lot of the behaviors that have been going on around that, that whole situation. We've got some people telling strangers who are just looking for a way through to go take that cut through, so we've got people from Canada, from Massachusetts, from other states that are just trying to find their way through. They're telling them to cut through there instead of taking the detour that they should be taking. And people are getting lost in there. I mean, it's just a goat rope, so...
Part of them going into the lines and everything else.
Yeah, it's just, and, you know, I mean, we could have a trooper sit there and start giving out tickets. We, but, I mean, if the locals would just not send everybody through there, you know, if you, you know, the thing is, I've lived here all my life, you're not gonna tell me I can't drive through there. Well, yes, we can, but just don't tell people that don't even know that it exists to drive through there, which has been happening. So, and I won't repeat some of the names that the workers around have called the locals. But it's, it's not a good look. Sorry, I missed C. So, let's see. But, back to budget update. The budget look, is looking very good, in my opinion. So far, from what we've calculated, there's only gonna be about a 10 cents difference in the total rates from last year to this year. And I can give you some, some numbers, but just be aware that changes can be made until the public hearing, so... Let's see, General Fund is going up just 6 cents. Park Town is going down 3 cents. Highway going down 38 cents. Line Mountain Lights going up 15 cents. Sorry, the electric bills went up. Danamora Fire is staying the same. Danamora EMS is going up 32 cents. Chateaugate Lake going down 2 cents. And so, we don't have the Line Mountain Fire District's numbers yet, but I'm told they're not gonna be significantly different.
Just part of it, I mean, I'm a commissioner, so...
So like I said, it's about a 10, 10 cents difference in, total difference in the rates from 2025 to 2026. And we will be going over the tax cap. Like I said, they, they told us that we could go up 1.0002 percent, and, which would equal about 11, under $12,000, $11,769. The insurance for the highway guys, the premiums, went up more than that. So it's kinda hard to only increase your budget 1% when everything around you has gone up at least 10% and even higher. But as we, as we know, there's no penalty for going over your tax cap, and there's no reward for staying under your tax cap. It's just a number that the state has put out there to try to keep things equalized.
How do we, like, go down like that when everything else around us went up? What are we, what are we skimping on?
Um, what are we going down, you, the ones that went down, you mean?
Oh yeah, we, we went down on, you know, X, Y, and Z. Everybody knows around you, everything's gone up.
Yep.
But yeah, and then our tax dollars went down, so where are we, where are we cutting?
Well, sometimes it's not cutting, sometimes it's, because the formula for doing, for finding out your tax rate is to take the total assessed value, so for example, General Fund, we take the total assessed value of the properties in the whole town. And we do, and, okay, let me back up. We take the number, the amount of taxes we need to collect, so 6,000, $60,000, and we divide that by the total assessed value. And so the answer we get is .0000 something, something.
Yeah.
And so if your assessed value goes way up, which this year we know everybody's assessed values went up, some on the lake, 23%, so around the, around the town, most values went up. So, it, the taxes we could stay down. Now what you pay might be just as much or more because your assessed value went up. So that's, that's how that part works. Now there's some things where we were actually less, because, for example, last year, in General Fund in Parks, we had put 80-something thousand in, in one area because, in the dam, because we thought we'd have to replace a gate for the seals. And then we found that it wasn't as big a thing, and so we didn't have to put that much in this year. So that dropped significantly. So there's certain things like that where you might've had to do a one-time purchase in an area, and so it bumped it up.
There was no significant cuts? Any more?
Not that I could draw it right now. When we go over the budget during the public hearing, I'll show all the cuts and all the increases at that time. Okay? So, you know, the budget's coming along. I, it's, I actually went on the, through the portal at the comptroller's site today to put in the tax cap information. And so that's one of the things that has to be done before we finalize the budget. I did it today because I, I, I know we're going to go over the tax cap. I mean, it's, you don't have to tell them the exact numbers yet, but I, they said, "Are you going over the tax cap?" And I said, "Yes, because we're definitely gonna spend more than 11,000 more than we did last year," so... Anybody else have any old business? No, no? Alright. New business? The county highway contract. So all the, well, nine of the town supervisors met with the county transportation committee last week, and we were pleased that they offered a 20% increase from last year for next year. However, then they wanted to do 2.5%, 2.5% for the following two years. They want a three-year contract. We basically told them, "No, that we don't want a three-year contract. We don't really wanna have more than one-year contract, but we would be willing to do two if the second year was 5%, so that we could all sit down and they could actually understand what it's costing us." And a group of us are going to be meeting with them again. Just to give you an example, they, they came to us and asked us all to calculate how much we're spending to... they, they came to us and asked us all to calculate how much we're spending to clean the county roads. I came up with a, with a, a number that didn't include everything that had already basically doubled what they give us. Uh, we, last year, we got sixty-six thousand and change, uh, to do the county roads. I took the men's wages, um, the cost of the materials, the use of the truck, using FEMA guidelines as to how much a truck costs to use for an hour. And for the loader, I didn't even include, you know, the hauling that we're doing, I didn't include any fringe or soft costs or anything, and it came up to like a hundred and sixteen thousand, so already I knew we were being well underpaid.
Plus we tracked it last one, plus we tracked it last one, how much time they spent on their roads and the county roads.
I mean, we, we, we tracked it, we have GPS on the trucks, and we could tell exactly how many times they were out, how long it took them. And so, um, the county, um, highway superintendent came back to me and said, well, the way I figured it, for you, it was like ninety-three thousand that you spent, and that includes everything. Well, I know his math is extremely wrong, but just using that number based on my number, or on what they paid us, they're already, um, down forty-one percent. I mean, ninety-three thousand, which is way lower than what we spent, is forty-one percent more than what they actually pay us. Now granted, it's better, in my mind, for us to do our own roads, because we will care more about them, we'll get to them faster and everything else. If the county does them, you know, when, where are they gonna show up? At least we have a better hold on it, but we also can't be taking it out of our budget to do their roads.
Take sure of how much it costs if you're letting them do it, and you'll figure out what it costs.
Well, and, and we know that, we know the county can't do it themselves, they would have to hire out. And so, this next meeting that we have, we're gonna be pointing all that out, because you needn't think that if you hire a company to do it, because you're like the county, now you're gonna have to pay prevailing wage. We think, we, we checked, and prevailing wage for a plow driver is fifty-six dollars an hour on regular time, another twenty-three if they're on overtime, and another thirty-something if they're on double time. And, you know, you know it doesn't snow from nine to five, Monday through Friday, so, it would be a pretty expensive, uh, thing for them, so, we're not done with that fight yet. We've got, and I, I just did calculations up to that certain point, and it was way over, some, some of the towns like Saranac, he went deep dived and he did all the fringe, he did how much each individual got paid for all of that. And, and really, we have, we have the fewest county roads of every town in the, in the county. Uh, we only do, uh, nine point one centerline miles, so, you know, eighteen point two lane miles is all we do for county. Some of them do like, you know, fifty miles of county roads, so, um, so that's another.
That's, oh, we do eighteen miles, that's it?
Of county roads, yep. You have just Standish Road, um, Shaysy Lake Road, and generally, Our Manor are the three county roads we do. And, and to total, total them all up, it's, it's, uh, nine point one centerlane miles, so, eighteen, eighteen point two.
Don't measure that, generally, that's right.
Yeah.
If you're taking the Shaysy Lake Road and you go to the town hall, that, that's gotta be six miles itself in there.
No, no. It feels like six miles, but it's, yeah.
It does.
You can, you can.
Rough miles.
But you gotta go from Lion Mountain to Standish is four or five itself.
Yeah, but. Yeah, I'm just. And we were.
So, you're telling me that's nine miles, one ways?
Nine point one miles, yep.
Okay.
Yep, that's what, so. All right, so that's it on that. Um, hydrant replacement, we've got, uh, how many hydrants in?
Just the one, just that one that needs to be replaced, but, uh, the rest one, we're gonna need new caps, I'm waiting for a quote for those.
Yeah, I, I haven't been, been able to get ahold of Ed Garrow yet, but I will, to get a quote for that. We have one hydrant on, uh, the other side of the village that needs to be replaced, um, so, we're working on that. Um, Halloween event, um, we're going to have it here, uh, the Halloween thing for the kids is gonna be in, in the town hall here on October twenty-fifth, uh, we'll put out a bunch of information until then, but just to let people know, um, with the changes.
What time?
Don't know yet.
Okay.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm checking to see who else has, because, you know, there's gonna be other places that have events, so, we don't wanna, we're gonna try to squeeze it in, the twenty-fifth. And, so here's another thing that, uh, I'll need a motion on if there's agreement. Uh, I, and I've already talked to Joey about it, and he's in full agreement with me. Uh, to change our meeting days, right now, are, it says that we meet the fourth Wednesday of the month. And after being in this job for the time I have, it would make a lot more sense to have it the first Wednesday of the month, so that, um, we could capture a whole month, it, it would, it would be a great benefit for the budget, because we can capture the whole month of bills and whatnot. If we, if we meet, like, say, all the January bills, we're meeting the first Wednesday of February, we'll have all our January bills, we can, we can close out that month, instead of it lagging into the next month. Um, also, for the reports that we get, for example, um, the town clerk does a monthly report, and the board gets it a month late, because she has to wait until the month closes in order to do the report. That's the way the program works. And any of the reports that we get that are monthly, we either have to get them a month late, or we only get the part of the month. So, um, I think it would be more efficient for budget and reports to have it the first, um, Wednesday of the month. And if I get agreement on that, I would like a motion for that. And we can, we can change that by resolution.
Make a motion that we, starting twenty-twenty-six, we make the monthly meetings the first Wednesday of each month.
Any more discussion? Roll call, Jim?
Yes.
Jason?
Yeah.
Mike?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes. Thank you. Joey thinks so. Any other new business? Okay, committee reports, um, you have your, the reports that you have from Shane and Danielle. And I don't have really anything else. Jim?
No, this I don't know.
Uh, Jason?
Well, I think pretty good, wrapping up the beach, I think I had a pretty good year there, it's pretty popular, I mean, everything stayed pretty clean.
I think, and I think Fallon's gonna keep it open till October fifteenth, because we do have somebody that rented the pavilion for October, that weekend before.
That's been long, yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been open since last, but.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I would manage, everything went pretty good.
Mike?
This is just a, a thorn stuck in my claw. This EMS, as, as I, as, and I've been thinking about it, probably should've talked about it last night at the budget meeting, I didn't. We are now going into year three, and we're going up a hundred thousand dollars. Services at a minimal at best. Is, is there, is there a way to exclude EMS from the budget? Obviously, we've had numerous meetings, they are not willing to budge one inch. I say, come with bluff, we, we have a glorified mutual aid call system, as it is right now, and we probably pay three times what they pay. I, I'm, I'm just not in agreement with, with that at all. And that's my thought, and that's all I have.
Okay. And Joey's not here, Mark's not here. Are there any follow-up questions? Mary?
Um, what's the status with the Shadegay Lake Water Level Control District Board? Did you get together with?
We haven't gotten together yet, um, uh, Don Bylow said that he would be more than happy to call together. I think right now, everybody's busy with budgets, um, 'cause we looked at calendars and, and no one had the same days available to do anything. Um, they said, looking at like the first week of October, first or second week of October, so I would expect to hear something from either Donnie or, um, Sarah in the next little.
So, the, the supervisors that are involved in the district are Ellenberg, Danamore, and Belmont. Don is the supervisor for Shadegay, so he is just an appointee of the town of Belmont to be the head of the water district board, but he is not one of the supervisors that has a control, controlling interest in what happens.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure he's, was like the president of the board or something?
He was an appointee of the town of Belmont, and they elected, the, the board itself, the appointees elected the officers. So, you know, the last time they had elections, which was whenever, twenty-nineteen.
Like twenty-nineteen, yeah.
He was re-elected as the president of the water board. But the critical people are the supervisors of the three towns that the district is in.
Okay.
I mean, he's obviously got knowledge and, you know, has been involved, but the critical participants would be the supervisors for the three towns that the district is in.
Okay, I'll get ahold of Sarah, um, and.
Yeah, it's Sarah, it's you, and it's, uh, Jason Dezen are the ones
Yeah.
that need to reconstitute this board.
Yeah, so basically, Sarah and me. Um, okay, I'll, I'll give Sarah a call tomorrow and see if, at least she and I can get together, um, and.
And take some action on this inspection report.
Yeah, I know, well, yeah, you saw, like, Burke's response to that.
Yeah, but, I mean, he's just one person that wasn't appointee at the town of Belmont, one out of nine on that board, just because his son-in-law is the dam keeper, uh, you know?
Right. Okay. Anybody else have anything more to add, to ask?
I just, for somebody who may not know, I, I was talking with the ambulance being in Lion Mountain. Now, it runs out of the village of Danamore, one combined unit, but it obviously favors that side, I was just speaking up for this side of the mountain to be more equivalent in, in its process, but they're not willing to budge, I just, me growing up in Lion Mountain, I just was assuming, I assume that, but, that's, that was my hope, just in the end. When I said, we have a glorified mutual aid system, I mean, everybody on this side of the mountain is really, you're not getting anything better than a mutual aid, when they station theirself in Danamore all the time.
I see that they're looking for help.
Yeah, they are.
Are we staffed, are we understaffed? What's the deal?
Same as everywhere, it's not just there, it's everywhere.
Not staffed all the time.
But, but at, at the end of the day, is what Mike's trying to say, is we've been hounding them ever since we've been doing this, and we're, we're looking out for all the taxpayers, not just portion of taxpayers, all the taxpayers, and we unfortunately pay three-quarters of the contract. So, that's where we've been at, fighting, and I agree with Mike on that, so, when we go to sign a contract, I would suggest that we type up a letter in saying that, you know, this is how it's gonna be, or.
What do you mean by, we pay three-quarters of the contract?
We have, because obviously, because obviously, the town of Danamore is bigger than the village.
The town of Danamore pays.
Pays more.
Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and they probably pay a hundred thousand.
Maybe a hundred thousand.
So, if they, if they say their response time is fifteen minutes, and, and they're good with coming fifteen minutes from Danamore to Lion Mountain, but if you turn the ball around and say, well, if you're stationed in Lion Mountain, which the work is actually like better, they're not happy with the fifteen minutes going that way.
Right, right.
All of a sudden, that fifteen minutes, oh my God, we gotta go to the gager.
Yeah.
Well, you don't have a problem going this way, but you have a problem going this way. And it's, yeah, the meetings are getting warm.
The, well, and, and the.
We've always had that service and that coverage up there, because a, a good portion of the town lives this way from the dam, that way is all that district, basically. So, in terms, those people are without, their, their paying is more than they ever have, and they have nothing now.
Well, I mean.
They have what's on this side.
No, that, the, no, you got, the population actually from.
If you take all Shadegay Lake, all that area, all Lion Mountain, all the way to here, now, that's a good chunk of people.
I, I know that, but I'm just saying, don't say that a majority lives there, because if you look at, if you look at the way, I mean, let's just use voting districts as an example. Voting districts are, they try to make them even.
Right.
In order to make the voting district in Lion Mountain even, they had to come all the way to the dam.
Right.
So, that's, that's one-third of the population to the dam. The rest, the other two-thirds, because, don't forget.
The voting district in Lion Mountain is not the same as the fire district, because Shaysy Lake's voting district goes up into here too. But Lion Mountain voting district does not come down into this.
Yes, the Lion Mountain voting district stops at the dam.
Same.
The Lion.
There's three voting districts.
That's right.
Yeah.
The Lion Mountain district comes to the dam.
The dam.
From the dam to, for the rest of Shaysy Lake is another voting district, and plus, the other side of the village is part of District Two, and then District One is the village. So, the village has, in this, in this town, I can tell you, because I just got the report, we have one thousand and two voters.
In this town?
In this town, we have one thousand and two voters, three hu, and it's pre, it's, it's split pretty evenly. Three hundred and some odd voters in the village, three hundred and some odd in, in the district that's part of Shaysy Lake in the other side of the village, and then three hundred and some odd voters from the dam into Lion Mountain and the rest, in everywhere else.
Smith Street splits the village.
Right. But in terms of, those are voters, though, they're not actual population. You've got some people, you know, that live there.
We're right, and I know, we have.
Each one's out of the year, they're here, so it turns out the population is greater in this area than it is in that area.
It's not accurate for the investors.
Yeah, but.
What caused putting something right here, which would be more in the middle?
Who's gonna pay for it?
We talked about it, but it's.
Yeah, we, we pay for it, we'd have to build a building.
Yeah.
I mean, who's gonna, who's gonna pay for it?
So, they work out at the fire halls?
No, the old school down going to our Saranac, that's their community center.
They work out there in the summer, then they push them back to the firehouse, because if, they're not a district down there, so they're village-owned.
We're trying to convince them to have, be, the, the people that work, the actual technicians, would love to be in Lion Mountain for the winters.
All winter.
Uh, they would love, and that's how, when, when the village had Saranac, they were half, in the summer, they were in the village, and in the winter, they were in Saranac, because they could keep their ambulances inside, et cetera, et cetera. We have the, we've offered them the same thing, we're getting resistance from, not from the EMS.